We'll open the Calhoun County Council Meeting. It will be the twenty-fifth, first on this agenda is Public Attorney of the 2019 dash thirteen. All just authorizing the postform notification of the value property value resulting from equalization and reassessment of all properties under jurisdiction of Calhoun County for one profit tax year to provide, or public hearing to provide for other matters related there. If I have any questions? You might can take that big bookie back and put it up. No questions?
Why is it, why do they, why is it being postponed or pushed back?
Ask them, ask them.
It's just, it's only been SOP since the statement allowed the county to delay coordinate the implementation here. It doesn't change your schedule, it just allows you to push it out further a year.
Okay, I know you get there every time, but I was just...
Yeah, and we've done, the only time we didn't do it was two thousand and six, I think. We went ahead and implemented the NESC calls towards the ATIs that came in effect that year. And it would have left us a little bit further behind the ACO if they would have had fifteen percent caps that were frozen back in, uh, when it's ever been in two thousand. So it would have really hurt the county that way. But what it essentially doing is you're just pushing that implementation back one more year or so. It generally works out better for everybody involved.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else have any questions? The hearing on orders twenty nineteen dash thirteen is now over, and we'll go into the regular Calhoun County Council Meeting called Order John, but you had the invitation for us.
Yes. For the President's presence, we give you thanks. We just ask that we conduct business in Calhoun County, you got over us and make our decision, making them be in their favor, and that we keep, we do these things in your name. Amen.
I have a motion, we approve amendments of October twenty eighth meeting. So far. Second. Any more discussion? All the favor of motion, aye. All opposed? Okay. Jim, you got a commitment?
None.
No, sir.
Yeah, no.
No.
Kim? Alright. Okay. Let's see, only one opponent, San Diego Fire District Board. Resolution, the confirmation below. Uh, resolution eight dash twenty nineteen, appointing Tiffany Fashion to the San Diego Fire District Board. Have a motion to approve.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All the favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, resolution nine dash twenty nineteen, reappointing Mike Lee to the San Diego Fire District Board. Have a motion.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All the favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, resolution ten dash twenty nineteen, reappointing William Wilk to the San Diego Fire District Board. Have a motion to salute. Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All the favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Resolution eleven dash twenty nineteen, appointing Jeff Coker to the San Diego Fire District Board. I have a motion, salute.
Second. Second.
Any more discussion? All the favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Uh, resolution twelve dash twenty nineteen, the resolution amending that certain agreement for the enrollment of joint county industrial park between Lexington County and Calhoun County, South Carolina to enlarge the park to add certain properties located in Lexington County owned by three seventy-four Metropolitan LLC, and approving and authorizing other matters related there. Have a motion to approve the resolution.
Salute.
Have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All the favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution thirteen dash twenty nineteen, the resolution of the Lake Mary Regional Water Agency committing to the purchase of the water system in the event of the sale of the South Carolina Property Service Authority. Have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, but can I refer that to you? Give us a little explanation on that.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, sir. I thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Council. Just to let y'all know, uh, you know, we're members of the Lake Mary, but Lake Mary Regional Water Authority along with Dorchester County, Berkeley County, Orangeburg County, and the town of Santee. Um, and, uh, the, there's been a lot of discussion about potentially Santee Cooper being sold, and if that happens, Lake Mary Regional Water Authority needs to have a plan in place. This plan, uh, includes language in there that makes it clear that were Santee Cooper to be sold, we understand that we would only be obligated, our portion of the debt of the existing agreement, and only if, uh, no continuation of the agreement with whoever the department was to be reached. There's language in there making it clear that we can negotiate that. And just to let the public know, the cap on our, uh, debt that we lose is around two-hundred thousand dollars. And so, this is just simply putting a plan in place just in case, uh, Santee Cooper is sold, so.
Okay. John, second to motion. Uh, any more discuss? Uh, yeah. Any more discussion? I tell you what, Russell, y'all about sold everything up there, nothing much to sell but a couple scraps around.
That's right.
Yeah, we don't sell anything else, for God's sake. We're all late to banks, we don't want anything anymore. Uh, all the favor of motion, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Alright. Uh, Topen, I see you here, so I guess you was starting appearances tonight.
Mr. Chairman, Council, Miss Feld, let me just begin by saying Happy Thanksgiving to you and your families. I certainly have got more blessings than I've deserved personally, but I'm certainly thankful for the support of the Council and all that you've been doing, of course, the last nine years. So just to begin my, offer my thanks. Uh, I've got a couple of quick comments. It's just customary for me to come at least once a semester and give you an update about what's happening in college. I'll start with our spring magazine. So, three times a year, we distribute our magazine to, to the residents of both Orangeburg and Calhoun Counties. And what we do is we highlight success stories of our students, and I'm, I'm proud to mention that one of the segments will feature eight seniors from Calhoun County. It is not unusual for us to have those seniors taking courses with us, but I think what's unique about these students is that they are taking courses in engineering, design, and technology, so engineering graphics, if you will. So, these students have been so successful that they completed the course halfway through the semester, and then what was program coordinator assigned them, a project that allowed them to, uh, complete the entire manufacturing process of design, prototype, and manufacturing. So, I think the benefit to these students is that they, I think, to some degree have found a passion, but they're also uniquely qualified either to enroll with us as a two-year associate degree earning student, or transition to a four-year degree if they so choose, but certainly on the path to a successful career. Also, we have begun the relationship with Calhoun County to have their Honors Academy, and very briefly, what that allows those students to do is by the time they graduate high school, they will have the opportunity to earn an associate's degree. So whether, so that's two years they can spend with us and go directly into the workforce, or we reduce the cost of a bachelor's degree by half because they're halfway, halfway there. Uh, so that's just your Calhoun County update. So, one of the things I'll, I'll talk about, just specifically to the colleges, that we, uh, the task will be is we've taken a look at ourselves, taken a look at what's happening in our region, what's happening across the state, and what's happening across the country, and we've begun to put a, a plan together, I think, that, that attempts to address some of the issues. Unemployment in this area and this region is as low as it's been, I think, I've heard thirty years, I've heard fifty years, so you've got a limited number of people looking for work, and you have an increase in the number of people who have the, the level of skill to be able to function, whether that's in healthcare or, or in the manufacturing environment. Labor, labor market projections, so we've shown an increase of about ten percent in manufacturing growth in this region, not just Orangeburg or Calhoun, but just in that lower Savannah region that we serve. Uh, there's limited population growth in rural parts of the state, and the, the changing nature of the workforce really is requiring us to think a little bit differently about ourselves. I, I was at the Orangeburg County Council Meeting a couple weeks ago, and during the public comment phase, there was a young man that stood up and said that no jobs, there's no opportunity in, in Orangeburg County. But it was timely that I was able to, to respond to those comments, because if there was ever a time in this state where folks couldn't have access to a good education at no cost, so we, we, we don't use the word free, we use the word debt-free. But is there an opportunity for somebody to get an education and have a job waiting for them at completion of that program? It's in this economy right now, and I think it's in this part of, of the state. So I think the fact that I was there to be able to discuss that, I think, um, had some, had some impact. So, so we've begun to refocus a little bit on, on, on what we're doing over the course of the next five to, to ten years, and I just want to talk about those very quickly. Uh, the first is, is a high-quality academic experience for students. So in the past, we've measured ourselves by the licensure pass rate for the students that, that sit for the healthcare nursing boards. We've looked at the placement of our graduates and, and the earning potential of those folks, and those continue to be good and strong, uh, and we are rated among the highest in the state, but I think there's an opportunity for us to do a little bit more. So one of the first things that we've done is creating some, some flexibility in our programs. So, business and accounting and early childhood, the nature of the students that we serve in those programs allows them, like the rest of our students have to work, and so they're trying to balance family and work and school. And so we've modified our schedules. For example, a student that's in a face-to-face course on Monday night can take that same course for a period of time online, or during the day, depending on the nature of their schedule. They're on the swing shift, they have a sick child, they've got some flexibility that allows them to be able to complete that semester and then transition back once the life circumstances have been, have been fixed. The second is, so machine tool technology is probably one of the most in-demand programs that we've got in the manufact, in the manufacturing sector, so those folks are machining parts for companies, and, and we're in the process of transitioning, transitioning that from machine tool technology program, what we refer to as CNC, computer numeric control. So rather than work that mill and lay, the individual programs that machine to be able to, to make that part. See the representative, I is here. Uh, we have a request into the, to our delegation to the state for roughly two million dollars to replace the equipment and to, uh, update that space that we think represents the kind of working environment that they'll face. So for example, uh, with the growth of Zeus, a lot of their increase in employment are going to be in those skilled trades, CNC is one of those areas. So we're looking to make sure that the programs that we offer and the graduates that we produce are matched up and, and clear alignment with the jobs that are available to, to those students. The other is part of our, uh, desire to have a high-quality academic experience, is to create some work-based learning experiences for our students. So, a lot of folks talk about life soft skills that students have, that go out, you know, show up on time, functioning in a team, understand the chain of command. One of the ways in which we're attempting to address that is to put folks in the work environment as part of the academic experience with us. So, CFA group, for example, in, is it GASP? Is it GASP? CFA? Yeah. So we, we've created a, a partnership with them to allow some of those students in our instrumentation program, um, to be co-op students. So the, the last semester of their senior year, they'll go to work, uh, and then when they finish that semester, they come back to us in the summer, they graduate. And, and a lot of instances, those folks have an offering hand by the time they leave to come back to us for the summer. The, the second is that we will provide standard facilities, technology and technology infrastructure. Um, we will finally be complete with our nursing building, we hope, within the next couple of weeks. The faculty will begin to move in, um, and then we'll start classes on January thirteenth, beginning with the, uh, the spring semester. Uh, we're planning to have a, a ribbon cutting to that event, so you all expect an invitation sometime towards the end of January, or the early part of February of two thousand and twenty. Uh, once the faculty move out of that building, we'll renovate that space to accommodate our physical therapy assistant program, certified nursing assistant, um, and EMT programs that are currently in the middle of space. So we'll create some high-quality space for them as well. Uh, the third focus is strategic partnerships. Um, I talked about the Calhoun Academy and Calhoun County High School relationships. So one of the things we're doing, uh, along those work-based learning experiences is to give those same opportunities for high school students. So those students that enroll with us in programs like welding and automotive and some of the healthcare programs will have an opportunity to, to not only get valuable work experience, but to some degree will get paid while they're functioning in, uh, in those places of employment. Uh, the fourth thing is entitled investment in ourselves. So we're looking at starting some new programs based on conversations we've had, we've had with employers, um, or just based on what we're able to determine as we, you know, we do kind of a, a SWOT analysis across the two counties. So, HVAC, we've done the, um, the residential program at John Ford Center, we're looking at a commercial-based program. We're looking at offering a paramedic degree, so we have EMT, which is a certificate, looking at paramedics, which is a, a two-year associate's degree, uh, and also diesel technology. So, you still have trucks on the road, someone's got to fix those trucks. So we have our truck driving program that folks can, they'll have to drive a truck, but we're also looking at ways in which we can come up with programs that will allow us to perform maintenance on those, those machines. Um, and then the last one is equitable out, equitable outcomes for all students. So when we look at the outcomes of all of our students, African-American students tend to, to trail to some degrees, we're looking at ways in which we can provide some level of academic and social support that allows those students to be just as successful as some of our white students. So, uh, just a quick overview of what's happening at college, and I certainly mentioned the questions to all I have for me at this point. Again, I just want to say thank you for, for what you've done for me.
Anybody got any questions?
Dr. Topen?
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate what you've kind of doing over there.
Thanks, sir. Alright, appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Topen. It's Stephanie Harrison, TRMC Health Committee.
Hello to everyone.
How you doing?
And I am Stephanie Harrison, I'm the Director of the Tri-County Health Network, and we are an affiliate of the Regional Medical Center. And, um, the network is a collaboration of partners that work collectively, um, to promote healthy lifestyles and improve access to healthcare in the tri-county area of Bamberg, Orangeburg, and Calhoun. How, ever to this point, we are working on our strategy to get into Calhoun County, which is why, a part of the reason I'm here, is to ask for your assistance in that. Um, this year, the Regional Medical Center and the, um, Health Network, we conducted a, a health needs assessment, and we identified the same results that have been showing up since two thousand and twelve, that, um, the greatest concerns in the health area in Calhoun, Bamberg, and Orangeburg continue to be obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and also access to care. Um, and recently, we've had, um, people that are really concerned about access to food so they can eat healthy, so they can be healthy. So, um, our network has worked together, we formed a coalition, and we have representatives from all three areas, and we, uh, we would like more representation from Calhoun County, um, as well. And we have formulated a community health improvement plan, which, that is mandated, um, as a part of the hospital, but we also use it to plan for the next three years of how we're going to, um, impact, uh, the three chronic areas that keep coming up, as well as access to healthcare. Uh, in two thousand and seventeen, we were awarded, uh, the Duke Endowment Grant, um, and with this grant, we can specifically implement evidence-based interventions in the tri-county area to prevent and impact these chronic conditions that keep coming up. And, um, we are currently implementing, we, EBI's for short, evidence-based interventions such as school and community gardens. We have a community garden over at the Regional Medical Center, where our most recent distribution went to, um, the cancer patients at the Major Center, and we give it out to, you know, anyone in the community who would like fresh, healthy, um, vegetables. And, um, we have, um, school gardens in Orangeburg and Bamberg Counties. We also, um, are working on implementing a walk, a dog program, which, um, is, uh, an EBI that would allow a physician to speak on a particular, uh, area, and then from that point, the attendees would walk a mile, um, as a, um, a form of exercise. And, um, we also provide it with pedometers so they can keep up the steps, and we can s, we can kind of measure the impact that that would have on these chronic conditions as well. We also are looking at implementing faithful families, that should be up and running really soon, uh, and that when we go into a faith-based setting, and we teach healthy eating, um, we actually cook and, um, learn how to have healthy dishes. And one of the strategies, I've, I've come to Calhoun, and I met with your wonderful county administrator and assistant administrator, and I've also met with a representative, I, a couple of times, and he's been, um, very kind and very helpful in trying to see how we could work together to possibly implement, um, these, bring these strategies for healthy living, so we can increase, um, healthy living lifestyles, for, for everybody to have a long, healthy life. So we have met and we have talked, um, one of the ideas was to do healthy cooking classes at, I believe it's called John Ford. So, uh, that was one of the ideas, but we would work with a group of whomever you would appoint to, um, design EBI specific to this county. And we have funding that we have set aside, we just need the opportunity, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. And another big EBI that we have just recently implemented is called Food Share, and I dare not try to explain that, I'm going to ask, um, Jim Johnson and, um, Gabe is here, they will, um, if, if you will allow, they will come and speak briefly about that strategy, which is just taken off, uh, in Orangeburg and Bamberg Counties.
So, um, my name's Jim Johnson, I actually wear a lot of hats in small communities as well, uh, but one of those happens to be, uh, I'm the president of a nonprofit called Ace Space and Growers, uh, which their original vision was to help small farmers, um, increase their capacity to get, uh, food into the food system, but also, the other part of that is, we were helping set up a food share in Orangeburg. Food share, and I might actually have Gabe talk a little bit more about food share. Uh, it actually was developed out of Columbia in the USC School of Medicine, um, as a program to help get fresh fruits and vegetables to kind of underserved populations, uh, using the SNAP program, uh, where people can pay five dollars on their EBT card and get fifteen-dollar box of fresh fruits and vegetables. So it's great value to them, um, using the Healthy Bucks, uh, system that the state offers. Um, but, uh, we were able to take this model that was created in Columbia, and, uh, they had a vision to expand this all across the United, all, all across the state, um, and we're one of the first rural counties, uh, Orangeburg was one of the first rural counties to adopt it. And we did a, kind of, uh, interesting model in that, uh, we partnered with a library in Orangeburg, and, um, the Ace Space and Growers actually, you know, we source the food, we box it, and then the library markets and distributes the food, uh, to a lot of their, you know, patrons that come through there, and it's been very successful so far. We have not really promoted or marketed this at all, it just shows kind of the need, uh, in the area. Um, so it's been a good, really good, uh, program, and, and people are starting to learn a little bit more about it, and now Bamberg is supposed to come on, um, next month, uh, and start their own food share, and we've been doing some planning with them. But, uh, I'm going to hand it off at this point to Gabe, because Gabe represents the Columbia Food Share, which is the one who came up with this whole, um, thing to begin with. But what I can say is that, you know, we're working in Orangeburg and Bamberg, and we'd love to come help you in Calhoun too, if this is something that the community's interested in, and I think it would be beneficial to the people for sure. But let me go ahead and introduce Gabe with Food Share South Carolina.
Thank you, Council. Um, my name's Gabriel Wilhelm, and I'm with Food Share South Carolina. And what we do is, we're just trying to enhance the quality of life, uh, for folks by selling produce at a discounted price. So we purchase it wholesale, and then turn around and sell it for that same price to people who would normally have access to that. So every two weeks, we have different boxes. Um, we have a large box that we sell for twenty dollars cash, but it has about a forty-dollar value if you bought those same items in the grocery store. For folks who are using their SNAP EBT cards, that box, that twenty-dollar box is only ten dollars, so they can really, really stretch their food budget on a monthly basis, because again, we do this bi-weekly. Our small box is only fifteen dollars cash with approximately thirty-dollar value, and folks who are using their SNAP cars purchase that at five dollars. So, uh, again, you can really see that value there. And what's in the box is about a, a variety of twelve to fifteen different fruits and vegetables, so we always try and include leafy greens, some sort of potato, like a sweet potato or a red potato, um, lots of fruits, it's about forty percent fruit, sixty percent vegetables, and the box weighs about eighteen to twenty pounds if you get that small box. So I always use the analogy of a bag of chips, you know, when you open up a bag of chips that's this big and the chips start down here, well, that's not the case with our boxes. When you open the box, usually the produce is coming right out because we're having to cram it so full of, of produce. So, again, the folks in Orangeburg have really seen the value of, we started in Orangeburg at the beginning of October with thirty-six boxes. We said, let's see how this goes, a bucket full of produce, and the library was just kind of word of mouth telling people about it. Well, this, uh, a week ago, when we did our Thanksgiving box, we were at a hundred and ninety-two boxes. So we went from thirty-six, uh, I guess, six weeks ago, to a hundred and ninety-two now, all through word of mouth, just people going, hey, I just got this from the library, you should go check it out too. Um, so we've already impacted almost the lives of two hundred family members in, in Orangeburg, and, uh, we'd love to help, um, the folks here in Calhoun and St. Anthony's do the same thing. But again, it's just, uh, the basics of it, because we want people to be able to eat healthy, but we know it's expensive to eat healthy. And so, our whole goal is, it doesn't matter where you're from, how much money you make, you should have access to healthy fruits and vegetables. Cover, Kim.
Thank you. We just wanted to thank you for this opportunity. If you have any questions, it might happen.
Well, he answered my question, I think, in the last, um, sentence, but, um, you don't check them to see if, if they're really needy, or they're getting back out there and going in the Cadillac and taking off.
Like reselling? Yeah, or something like that.
Well, I mean, just, you know, looking for something for nothing.
Well, actually, you can pay cash for the box too, you don't have to have EBT, but, you know, we limit boxes to usually two per person, uh, and we do try to, I think, keep up with that. But if it's a real big family, we might make a, you know.
I understand, but I can, you know, there's, uh, some people don't want, you know, they don't need to be in the line, you know?
To answer that question, there is not, um, there's not a process for applying, our program is open to anyone. For example, in Columbia, we know that there are some doctors who probably don't need that box, but they're also helping promote the program within their practice, and so they're sending patients our way. So, yeah, we have no problem if they take, you know, take advantage of the box. I would say if there are people turning around and selling it, that's probably the exception and not the norm. Uh, we, we trust the people, and the people that need it are the ones who are showing up and purchasing the box. But again, it is a purchase, uh, so sure, there is a great value, but we've not seen anybody yet purchasing multiple boxes and then going over to the corner and creating a farmer's market or, you know, food truck or food stand or anything like that.
I'm not talking about them, I'm talking about the guy that's got plenty of money that can, you know, go there and buy to take the wig there, and, uh, that's who I'm talking about.
Sure.
You know, you, you know, I call them deadbeats, they don't need to be in the line.
Right. We have not, we have not seen any of those folks showing up. We, the people who show up are the people who really, really need it.
I have a question. Okay, so if, if this is promoted, you know, within the community, for the people who do want to pay cash, can they pay online? Is there an electronic way to pay for the box, or do they just?
There's not a way online to pay for it, everything is done in person, uh, and so with those two forms of payment, it's just cash and EBT, and so, um, you know, we have to see the person in person, there's not an online way to do it. Part of that is to help us keep our Part of that is to help us keep our costs low. Because as soon as you do something online with a credit card, there's those fees that are associated with it and we're not marking the box up really at all. And so we won't, we don't want to, we don't want to pay those fees with the credit cards that would make the box all of a sudden be a little bit more, cost a little bit more.
Okay, and is it a first come, first served?
Everything's paid for in advance.
Okay, so you have to order?
Yes, ma'am. So you order on a specific deadline date and you come the next week to pick up your box. Again, that way, we're not wasting food and we're only purchasing boxes for the people who we know want them. And generally, if you've paid for it in advance, you're going to show back up. There are a few times where people don't show back up. And then that, again, that's the exception and not the norm. And so we've identified different families or entities that we can donate those boxes to so that food doesn't go to waste.
The reason I ask you that is because I lived at a camera that Harvest Hope comes down through there with the cheese and stuff every once in a while. And some of those guys are seeing who was in the line and they don't send Harvest Hope any money. They said, you know, the heck with that. So they quit sending Harvest Hope money. That's why I was asking.
We have fun and available for the strategies. We just want the opportunity.
Right. Okay. We'll probably can work something out, Ted.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me thank, I want to say thank you, Mr. Harrison, for coming over to Big Man. Jim, for coming over and talking to me about this as well. And also, I want to thank Representative Ott for also helping us put this together. I know he made one, made a couple of comments himself about this. But I also just want you to know that this whole group has made it clear that the goal of what they're trying to do is to give some folks here in the county who may not know that these resources are available to the county and to them. They're there and they really want to try to make an effort to get these resources out to where they're intended to go. Because right now, they're not getting to our folks that might need them in the county. I know there are folks who need these, these boxes, these resources and programs.
You got anything else?
I'll say it to whoever, Chairman.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. That might be long. Thank you, Chairman. I just want to reiterate what Ted said. I couldn't say it any better. I just wanted to come and show support for Stephanie and Jim and Gabe and just try to bring that to Calhoun County as well. As they would meet Stephanie at a conference and just collaborating and talking about what the different possibilities are. And I think with what we have at John Ford, it just really sets up well some of the programs that they've already proved are successful can also be brought to Calhoun County. So I just wanted to be here and support them. But at the same time, just thank Council and thank your staff as well for the great working relationship that they extend to me and that I hope I extend to them and that we can continue in the future. So thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
When you collaborate with the, with the library, do they use their paid help? Or do volunteers come in and do that? Or how's that?
Yeah, it's a mixture of their paid staff and volunteers. So right now, we have volunteers packing, sorting and packing the food when it comes in. And we've had one or two stay behind to help them with distribution. But it depends on the model. So like Banburg is going to be totally different. Banburg is a total volunteer infrastructure. But on our side, we're still, most of our folks are volunteer on the packing side. And I did mention, you know, we're trying to get as much local food in this as we can. That's another big objective, which is an economic development type objective. But, so the distribution we did with the one ninety-two that he was talking about, we had two local items in there, sweet potatoes and collards. But we'd like to see as much as we can get in there.
Okay, thank you all much.
Thank you.
Lyman Ray Stevens Incorporated, Al County Accounting Firm.
Mr. Chairman, members of County Council, good evening. My name is Lyman Ray, I'm on Stevens. We're a financial services firm that works with governments on their finances. We have an office in Columbia. I am the financial advisor to Calhoun County and working with Mr. Christmas. So tonight, I'm here to show you an opportunity for the county to save some money on some of their debt. Specifically, what I'm addressing is there are two USVA, Department of Agriculture utility bonds that the county has. One is at five point one two five and one is at four point five percent. And as you are probably aware, with interest rates where they are today, it's much lower. It's kind of like going and taking your thirty-year mortgage and going in and refinancing it at a fifteen-year rate. And the reason I bring it up for that, and Mr. Christmas should have supplied you a chart, the way we refinance this is for us to go out to several banks that would be interested in this, the BBNTs of the world, South State Bank, those kind of banks, and show them a request for proposal for the debt. And we estimate that right now in the neighborhood of about two point six percent would be the rate on it. And so if you see the chart, what happens is, like I say, in shortening the loan, especially the one that goes out for twenty-eight years, banks will only, they only will go out for fifteen years on fixed rate. So by shortening the refunding or the refinancing out to fifteen years, you do pay a little more upfront each year, but overall, your gross savings are close to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then what we do is we net present value that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars at today's dollars, which is worth a little over three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And that would be the savings to the county. So if you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Well, we're willing to save a couple of dollars. Any other questions? Need a motion? Can we?
Yeah, it's a, well, that'd be good, Stan.
I'd make a motion that we, looking at doing the refinancing, is our speaker standing.
He's always just like to give, to be the authority to put that up.
Yeah, yeah, the authority to do that.
Right, I just want to let you, it will be all put together and then you can decide if you want to go ahead and move forward with it. It's not like, once you move tonight, it's like you're already, there's no way to go back.
Yeah, right. I'll second.
Ever have more discussion? All the members of motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Adise, you got the board of the financial center?
Yes. Good evening. So I should have given you all a packet, stick it together, about four pages. This is our governmental funds. It's our first quarter governmental funds. The first page is our general fund. And our revenue was budgeted at thirteen million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. We've collected five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars so far. Our expenditures are budgeted at thirteen million, six eighty-seven, one sixty-four. And our here-to-date actual is three million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars. We have spent twenty-four percent of our budget through twenty-five percent of the year. So we're under budgeted by one percent as of September thirtieth. A note on the revenue, the revenue is only at four point three percent collected. As you all know, we have the same conversation each year. It's due to our taxes. Property taxes are always sent out after the first quarter. So our first quarter revenue was always down. But we are, on a good note, we are ahead by sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars compared to last year at this time. So that's positive. The second page is our capital improvement fund. Our revenue is budgeted at three million, eighty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. We have collected six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And that's, again, due to our source of revenue, our main source of revenue for the capital improvement fund is our fee and lieu, the S E and G, formerly Calpine, Columbia Energy. And that fee payment does not come in until January each year. So we should get the bulk of our revenue in January in this fund. We've spent four hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars, which is thirteen point one percent. So we're well under budgeted in the capital improvement fund. Next is our debt service fund. Our revenue is budgeted at two hundred and eighty thousand. We have collected a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight eighty-five, which is forty percent. That seems a lot higher, as you can tell, compared to the other two funds we discussed. And that is due to the fact that we get a transfer in from our accommodations tax revenue to make a debt service payment. We have two payments in our debt service fund and the other payment is for the courthouse bond. And that bond is not due until June of next year. So our expenditures sit at a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars, which is thirty-seven point nine percent. So like I said, the only other payment we'll pay out of there will be our, in June, for our courthouse bond. About that time, we would have collected our limited revenue. The last page is our Calhoun County Rural Fire District. It's got revenue budgeted at five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We've collected thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. Our expenditures are at one hundred thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, which is seventeen percent, which is well under budget. Again, the revenue, the revenue sources in this fund are fire fees and local option sales tax. And we just received our last, well, the September payment for local option sales tax from the state. So I will be calculating that first quarter of revenue next week and posting that. And at the bottom of that page is the debt service fund for the fire folks. And the revenue for this fund is budgeted at a hundred and twelve thousand. We've collected ten thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is nine percent. And we have spent nothing so far because the only thing that is spent out of here is one annual debt service payment in the amount of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And that is not due until February. Any questions?
Um, do you, is there anything on the horizon that you can see that's going to, I mean, are there any? I know that we, you know, this time of the year, we're waiting on the taxes to come in. Is there any, are there any times of the year that we might see something that would skew the numbers for that particular quarter that you're aware of or?
Yeah, certain things do happen. Especially, we ran into a case like this in, two years ago? Or was it last year? With the state reassessing the vehicles and it caused our vehicle tax revenue to go down. And it took us about three quarters to figure that out after I sent emails out to all the finance directors in the state and we all kind of scratched our heads and, you know, started asking questions. So things do happen that we're not aware of. Nothing's happened so far. And I have not heard of any, anything that would negatively impact our collections.
Anybody got a question? Any other question?
Thank you all. And if you don't mind, I'm going to be excused if you all will excuse me.
Have a good day, Susan.
Yeah, spend some time with my Air Force daughter. Thank you.
Any, the update, on the whole business, the update on the city of Casey, White Water Group.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Council. As y'all recalled in the spring, we had discussed how we were going to need to update potentially our sewer ordinances to reflect changes that the city of Casey was going to be making in twenty nineteen to their path oil grease ordinance and sewer use ordinance. And it took several months for the city of Casey to get that done. They have sent us copies of their new ordinances and we have been working with DHEC to make sure that we implement our changes. Y'all have already given me a priority to do this. I'm just giving you an update. That we implement the changes accordingly. And obviously, if DHEC decides, no, we want you to come back and formally update your ordinances to reflect the language in the new Casey ordinance, we will do that. But we have sent a letter to DHEC, working with their staff, that we think is going to meet their approval. And once they've done that, they will say, you're good with the language like this because you're acknowledging that you're a customer of Casey, you're going to follow their pre-trading program. Or if they say, no, we need you to go back and update your ordinance, we'll bring that to you. But either way, we're very close to finishing that up. So I just wanted to bring it up today.
Okay. Any other question? Any other little business? Some of you that have already been on the agenda, if you want to leave, you're welcome to leave. Hang around here. Uh, I'm a human. We don't have any. Oh, this is third reading on ordinance twenty nineteen dash thirteen, the over-riding default, forward of interpretation of revised property values resulting from the equalization and reassessment of all properties under jurisdiction of Calhoun County for the property tax yet to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters to be raised there. And a motion to be approved, third reading. Second. Any more discussion? All opinion of motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? On the ordinance twenty nineteen dash fourteen, an ordinance to convey three point two four acres, more or less, to Newton Truck Parts and Copley Estates in that part of town. I have a motion to be approved for reading on this.
Second.
Any more discussion? All opinion of motion, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Ted, you got high lineups now.
Yes, sir, and they're very brief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to let you know that first, on the building and planning review public meeting that was held on November the eighteenth at the Sandy Run EMS Station Training Room, I'm actually pleased to say that we had, we had not enough room for the folks to show up. I'm glad that we had that kind of participation. I stopped counting at thirty-five different, unique people that had come into the room at various points to participate. This is the second of the two public meetings that we held to introduce the public to the concept that we are reviewing our planning and zoning documents. And we started with those zoning ordinance and map. And we had really good feedback and those are going to be incorporated into some draft changes that we put for a couple of public meetings for the public to look at. We're going to do it in a format per request of Colonel Nelson. It shows the existing zoning ordinance and the existing maps and the changes that we would propose. I know that there will be at least two new zoning districts proposed to help put in place some new tools for the county to be able to help protect the rural character in parts of our county where it's wanted, while at the same time, not trying to send an anti-business message at all, which I think is the right core we're trying to strike. And I'll be glad to defer to Colonel Nelson any comments he wants to make. But I just wanted you to know, we had, I think the proper word is overflow participation from the people in Sandy Run at that meeting on the eighteenth. And thanks to Mr. Watkins, I saw him come in and I know he was part of that meeting. I was one of the group there. I think he echoed that it was a very robust and healthy discussion. Colonel, I'll defer to you being able to comment.
Yeah, I want to thank Ted and staff for just their continual support and all they're doing to help facilitate this. This is a real exciting time in Sandy Run. And what I can tell the folks there quite often is that we can't stop the growth that's happening there. It's coming, but we can do some good things to direct the growth. And that's the importance of this meeting, these series of meetings. And over the next several months, I think there's going to be some very good things that'll happen. But we're going to really continue to solicit the public's involvement so that we do it right and that we maintain the character of our community while, you know, while accommodated growth is inevitable coming. So certainly, we'll look at where we draw the lines and how we divide this up in terms of how far we come down into county. That's to be determined still, but I'm real excited about it and what Mr. John Gardner and his staff do as well. So thanks for your support, Ted. We'll keep moving in the right direction. Thanks.
And one other note on that, just to let y'all know. We had members of the Planning Commission, we had three members of the Planning Commission there. The chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals also attended. Our building official was there and also Ms. Hawkins, our deputy administrator of operations, was there at the meeting. It was a really good meeting. The second item is a report on the Lower Savannah Council of Government's Transportation Advisory Committee meeting that was held on November the nineteenth, the day after the meeting I was just reporting on. And they held it at John Ford's banquet hall in Calhoun County. It was our turn to host. And it was a good time for us to host because, as you know, we have really put a focus on the upcoming allocation of guide share funds, which is done through several items, including the long-range transportation plan, I think, that sort of kicks off. And I'll report on that in a minute. But I'm pleased to say that at the tack meeting, all three of our committee members were there, Mr. Till, Ms. Golden, and Mr. Hill. And they did a good job representing us. That was right on top of our workshop that day. And they did a good job of making it clear that the good news that I'm about to tell you all about in a minute about the long-range transportation plan, that we also expect that to move forward now as we get those products moved over and actually positioned for funding as part of the state's transportation improvement plan and stuff. And so we're going to get some projects this year. We've made it a priority. They're broken down into several. They're broken down into several categories, including corridors, including intersections, uh, and paving improvements. And, uh, there's one other one I can't remember, but it's, but we have projects in all four categories this year. And so we've really done a, a, a good job working as a team to make it clear that, um, we don't want to get stuck with just simply having one, uh, or two small projects just sitting there, uh, to sort of throw, you know, Calhoun County a bone. We actually want our priorities as part of the, of the, of the plan from step one and we've done that. And we're in a really good position now to move forward. We appreciate our representatives doing that. Which spills into item three, specifically the long-range transportation plan, which sort of kicks everything off. It's a plan that, uh, is, is being done through twenty forty-eight, uh, this year and they're updating it right now for the next twenty years. I'm pleased to say that in the last, uh, in the last transportation, we didn't do very well. We only had a few projects. In this plan, we are tied with Aiken and Orangeburg for the most projects that made it through the entire process, um, uh, that is now sitting on the long-range transportation plan. And so we are now in a much better position to get projects moved from those various categories. We have a total of fourteen in the four categories. Uh, we get to get those moved over and actually put in a position for funding. And we're also going to do, uh, a much better job of having our county transportation committee communicate with the COG staff, with DOT and with our staff to make sure that we find creative ways to get some of our, uh, projects with matching funds from the CTC or, you know, whatever we have to do to get them, you know, into reality. It's not just simply a project we want. This is a project that's actually going to get funded. It's going to get funded soon. That's what we're going to do. So I want y'all to know that, uh, we feel like we're in about as good a shape as we've ever been in terms of the long-range transportation plan that we've got. So, um, the fourth item represented the county as part of the central alliance's federal legislative conference. They do this biennially, uh, in, in Washington and I was, uh, part of the delegation up there last week. And, um, I had a great chance to be face to face with Representative Claver for a long time, his office, in his whip office. And also, we met with the staffs of both of our U.S. senators. And I can tell you that what was pleasing to me was that all of them had our priorities, uh, right there, ready to go, and they were all engaged. Uh, Mr. Claver, uh, met with Clarity County and us, uh, for at least an hour in his office. And he was right on cue talking about the opportunity zones, about rural infrastructure, about Lake Mary Regional Water Authority, everything that you would expect him to be engaged on. And, uh, he also was very excited to hear that the phase two renovations of John Ford were finished. And we have invited him to come down and tour that facility and he's going to be joining us, uh, to come down for a tour of John Ford very soon. We're excited about that. And Mr. Scott's staff could not have been nicer about the opportunity zones. That's the focus of his. Uh, we are putting his, uh, opportunity zone guru, uh, in those hawkins together. And they're going to talk about opportunities that we have in our opportunity zones of the county to try to take advantage of this program. The regulations for that is supposed to be out by the end of twenty twenty. And, uh, believe it or not, they don't have the regulations yet for this program that's been talked about now for a while. Um, they'll be out this year and we plan to be right there at the table and take advantage of it and to get some investment into the parts of our county that need it the most. Very successful trip. I'm always honored to represent the county at something like that. And, um, appreciated the, the council letting me do that. And finally, I just wanted to let you know about the, the housing and urban development and Lower Savannah Council of Government's Fair Housing Plan, uh, for this year. We kicked it off by displaying the posters we always do here in the annex. That also will involve a resolution on fair housing being passed in April, which y'all do every year. And we will also work any other way the COG wants us to. Uh, that keeps us eligible for certain programs and, um, and housing funds that are available to the COG. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'll let y'all have your questions.
Anybody got a question? Thank you, Ted. Okay, we, uh, negative session got two, a personal matter in Pro Bay Court and economic development project conversation.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will be going to executive session to discuss a personal matter in Pro Bay Court and an economic development matter of, um, project conversation.
Okay, absolutely. Any other discussions? I will pay the motion, aye? Everybody have a nice, thanks Ted.